Welcome to the August the 11th, 2025 Media and Sandusky City Commission. We have an invocation offered by myself, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Dear Lord, we seek your wisdom and guidance. Protect us from self-interest and narrow agendas. Teach us humility and make us hungry for your will. Be with us as our discussions and guide our decisions so that we always do what is right and just for this community. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Coons?
Here.
Mr. Crable?
Here.
Ms. Vargo?
Here.
Mr. Wantington?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Bajali?
Here.
Commissioners, you have before you the minutes of our meeting of July the 28th, 2025. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wantington?
I move that we accept the minutes of the July 28 meeting as presented.
Second.
And a motion in the second discussion. Without objection, the motion be approved. In hearing no objection, that motion is approved. As we do each year, we have a proclamation regarding driving sober. And I've asked Commissioner Coontz to deliver that proclamation for us this year.
Whereas from August 15th through September 1st, 2024, law enforcement nationwide will be joining the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration in the High Visibility Drive Sober or Get Pulled Over campaign. And whereas officers in the Sandusky Police Department will show zero tolerance for drunk driving. And whereas although it is illegal in all 50 states, the District of Columbia and Puerto Rico to drive drunk having a blood alcohol concentration of .08 or higher, far too many people across this nation get behind the wheel after consuming too much alcohol. And whereas during the 2023 Labor Day holiday, there were 511 crash fatalities nationwide, and more than one-third, 36% of those motor vehicle traffic deaths involve drivers who were alcohol impaired. And whereas drunk driving takes a particularly heavy toll among young drivers, and whereas research has shown that high visibility enforcement like the Drive Sober or Get Pulled Over campaign reduces drunk driving fatalities by as much as 20%. And by joining this nationwide effort, Sandusky's roadways will be made safer for everyone throughout the Labor Day period. And whereas the Sandusky Police Department wants to remind everyone getting behind the wheel drunk is a terrible idea as it impairs your ability to operate a vehicle safely, impairs your judgment and good sense about whether you can or should drive. And whereas driving drunk is simply not worth the risk. Now, therefore, I, Richard Coontz, a member of the City Commission, along with fellow City Commission members, do hereby proclaim and announce August 15th through September 1st, 2025 as Drive Sober or Get Pulled Over in the city of Sandusky. I urge all citizens to travel sober and safely dated this 11th day of August, 2025.
Thank you, Commissioner Coontz. Any residents with comments regarding tonight's agenda? Please step to the podium, share with Mr. Damon address and your agenda comments. I'd ask you to keep your comments for three minutes, and we will do our best to answer those questions.
Good evening. Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way. Three different items. The first item is number three, which is the Camp Street project. Here we're seeing another cost project with a cost overrun of $183,000. Would be interesting to see how we come out with cost overruns on all projects up until now versus how many deducts. Like, interested to see what that number is because it seems like there's more cost overruns than what there are, you know, deducts. Number two is the items four, five, and six, which is the lawsuits pertaining to the Cleveland Road project. Curious whether or not we have an in stone number that the city's going to be paying out for that and if we're going to get any help from the insurance company or the state of Ohio. Item number 10 is an update of the code for nuisance abatement. Perhaps someone can go over the old language or the old process versus the proposed new process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schwanger. Additional comments from the audience on agenda items?
Greetings, everyone. Tom Lamarka, 206 48th Street. On item one on the fireworks ordinance, it looks as though you just went through and crossed out every holiday but the Fourth of July. And so I think it's a little bit too strict. I know there were a lot of complaints about the fireworks, but I still think you're tightening it up a little bit too much. And on the litigation that took place with S&amp;S Realty on Cleveland Road, I'm thankful that the state is going to jump in there and it looks like they're going to cover 95% of that expense, which they should have covered in the beginning. I think the whole thing is their mess. And the city's part, it looks like with those three cases together and legal fees, it's going to be about $100,000, which is almost reasonable on that project. But why did they let the interest accrue to $106,000? You knew the judgment was there. Why didn't someone just pay it and get it over with and save that $100,000? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lamarka. Additional comments from the public on agenda items? If not, Commissioners, you have before you several communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation. Can I have a motion to accept those communications?
So moved.
Second.
And a motion in the second discussion. Without objection, the motion be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Commissioners, we have three items on the consent agenda this evening. Do any of you wish to move any of those items to the regular agenda? Ms. Myers, will you present the consent agenda?
Item A, approval of amendment to ordinance 25-032, authorizing the purchase of a brine maker. Item B, approval of land bank purchase and sale agreement for the Third Street lot with Dennis Watson. Item C, permission to dispose of unneeded items.
Commissioners, having heard these ordinances, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Crable.
Yes, I move approval of these three ordinances in keeping with Section 14 of the city charter.
So moved. I mean, second, I'm sorry.
And a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call the rule on that motion, please.
Mr. Coontz?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Coontz?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Those ordinances are passed. I would like to return to item B. There was a question during the audience participation regarding to item B. I wonder if we can have a brief discussion about that, even though that legislation is passed. Who would have the answer to the question that was raised on that? What was the question that we've raised? I have a note here that item B was the asked question. There was a question on item B, am I incorrect?
I think it was on...
Okay, so there's no question.
It was item three.
Item three.
Yeah.
Three sounds to be to a hundred percent. Great. Ms. Myers, is that item one of the regular agenda?
This is the first reading. It is requested an ordinance be passed amending Part 15 Fire Prevention Code, Chapter 1519 Fireworks, Section 1519.04, possession, sale, or discharge prohibited exceptions of the codified ordinances of the city of Sandusky in a manner and way specifically set forth here and below.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I'm with the adoption of item number one and the ordinance contained therein.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I hear the comment that we maybe have gone too far. It does allow for the use of fireworks on New Year's Eve as well. We're still going to see the illegal use of fireworks, and some folks are concerned that we haven't addressed in this legislation, commercial fireworks. That's already addressed by state law. You can't use commercial fireworks in the state of, or in the city of Sandusky unless you've got a permit. The issue going forward, because this is, this is so often the case, not something that just plagues Sandusky, it's a nationwide plague. And it's just a plague of inconsiderateness and maybe the inexpense of fireworks. But going forward, it will be up to us and the city to be creative about how we enforce it. Other communities are looking at other ways of enforcement, including drones and including the use of zoning, or I should say code, housing code nuisances as a way to target the landowner as opposed to having to rely on the police to show up just in the nick of time to find the person who's shooting off the fireworks. So it'll be interesting to see where all that goes, but I think technology is going to provide us with some additional options. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. The statement, though, that we eliminate it every day except January, Mr. Hastings, is not accurate. Is that correct? We preserved for fireworks the day before January 1st, January 1st, the 19th day of June, the third and fourth days of July. So we've got...
That is correct.
Four or five days in there. So it's not limited to one day.
Correct.
I heard that and understood that correctly.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Crable.
I'd just make a quick observation. The obligation kind of falls on property owners. And in generals, I think that that's where it probably needs to be. I think it's going to be interesting to see how it works out, working with SPD, because a lot of commercial properties are not... There's no one on the property at the time the fireworks are being shot off, which is, you know, after nightfall, basically. So it's going to be interesting to see how that plays out. I know that, and I'm just speaking for myself, I own a piece of property. Find out that there were fireworks being shot off on the paved area of the property. I had no idea because I'm not there. So it's going to be interesting to see. And, you know, is it something where commercial property owners, maybe we need to come up with some kind of signage for posting or something? I don't know. So I just throw that out there for future consideration.
Challenge. Thank you, Mr. Crable. Additional comments? Ms. Myers, you pull the commission on that motion, please.
Mr. Coontz?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Coontz?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed on its first reading. It'll come back to us one more time. Ms. Myers, you present item number two, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to make payment to Retsal &amp; Andress LPA of Akron, Ohio for professional services incurred in June 2025 relating to the appropriation of property for the Cleveland Road Safety Improvement Project. In declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Coontz.
Move for approval of this ordinance under item two in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you pull the commission on that motion.
Mr. Coontz?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Abstain.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Coontz?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Abstain.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number three.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to approve the second and final change order for work performed by Spear Brothers Incorporated of Sandusky, Ohio, to the Camp Street and West Forest Drive Utility Relocation Project in the amount of $183,237.12. In declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wantington?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension and we're using full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
And a motion in the second discussion. Mr. Klein, I wonder if you'd share with us, give us the Reader's Digest version of that change order.
Yes, sir. There were five items that I listed in detail in the communication. But I think the two that really made the biggest impact on this project was the design of how we were going to reconnect the sewer laterals and the water services. Originally, we were supposed to have a plumber go into the crawl space of each of these buildings. And as we got into it, we found that some of the buildings had three or four sewer connections just on the one residence. So if you had a quad, you might have four in that one. Then there was a single residence. One of them I went into had three. So there was a lot of extra work that we were going to get into on that. And what we decided was that we would connect in the back and then route around the residences, around the houses, to get out to the front. Luckily, we were able to get the fall on the sewer lines and the water lines worked out well. On the second phase, obviously, we're going to correct that situation, and we're going to make sure that we're routing it the proper way. That was a cost increase, but I think it was actually a much less of a cost increase than we would have incurred if we had to get a plumber to be crawling under some of those houses. The other one, the bedrock out there, the contractor worked with us in that we could have incurred significant costs on the time that he lost on digging through the bedrock. He didn't give us a cost increase for the bedrock, but unfortunately, as he was pounding through it, it really destroyed the base of the road. So we had a lot more base repairs and concrete repairs within that road because of all the vibration from the hammering. So those were the two big items that came through as we were going through construction. Obviously, on the next phase, that we should be bringing the next one to commission for permission to bid. The remainder of MacArthur Park on Phase Two, we did adjust quantities and things for that on that project. So hopefully, we don't incur the same problems.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. I point out that that percentage-wise, that's... Nothing's insignificant when you're talking about these kind of dollars, but you're about 8%, seven and a half, 8% in a change order of a $2.6 million project. So I think that's acceptable in this day and age.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I think it's important because it's easy to fall into the trap of believing that change orders are always somebody doing something wrong or contractor looking for monies to which they're not entitled. I think exactly the opposite is true. Over the course of a long period of time, the Sandusky has, the city of Sandusky has been demanding of contractors, who do require them to do what they say they're going to do. But we've also been understanding the fact that in construction, in the real world, sometimes there's rock where you didn't think it was going to be a rock. Sometimes there's a pipe where you didn't think there was going to be a pipe. And it's really no one's fault today. That's just how it was done years ago. And if we want to continue to receive the good bids that we get today, we need to maintain fair, long-term relationships with the contracting community. That's how we get the best price. If we insist that, well, you know, you could have taken an x-ray of the ground and see there was rock there, or whatever the particular situation is, then what we're going to find is those contractors are going to build in a little bit extra to make, take into account the fact that Sandusky is not a fair partner. And we always have to be a partner in construction because there are things that we need, things that they need, and we're going to need them around tomorrow, and they're going to need us. So just some thoughts that surround the consideration of change orders.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Additional comments?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Crable.
Yeah, I... One of the things that I've been kind of most amazed at in the short time that I've been on the commission are the number of contracts that come back that are reduced. And they can be reduced by $30,000, $40,000 at a pop, which says something, I think, pretty remarkable about the vendors that we would use, that they're honest and straightforward and deal in a very legitimate way with us. But yeah, there have been any number of instances where we've actually saved money on contracts, and particularly recently.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Coontz.
I think it's a good point or question to raise because it would be interesting to compare and contrast what change orders look like, the deductions versus the additions. So that might be something we want to take a look at at the end of each year, just to be able to say, hey, we saved money, right? Or we spent a little more money, but it's just good to know.
Additional questions or comments, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
I was... Mr. Crable took the words out of my mouth. I've been surprised at how many deducts have come back. And maybe we don't point that out enough. I guess you have to read the literature, and if you're sitting in the audience, maybe you don't see those things broken out. But there have been a number of deducts. It surprised me, not in the amounts that you see here because the projects are smaller. But we are getting some money back. And just, Mr. Chairman, if I could, Mr. Klein, did I see where there was, there's some money left over that will go to the next phase of this project? Maybe a half million dollars, did I read somewhere?
Yes. The US EPA dollars that were secured from Congresswoman Capter, we got, I can't remember the exact number. It was like 900 and some thousand that we received from her. And of that, we still have, my number in here was off by $22 when I ran through it. We have $435,813.35 left that we're going to apply to the next phase.
Well, that's good news also.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Ms. Myers, you pull the commission on that motion.
Mr. Coontz?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Coontz?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number four.
It is requested an ordinance be passed approving the expenditure of funds to the Erie County Clerk of Courts ordered by final judgment entry in case number 2024-CV-0247, captioned "City of Sandusky, Ohio versus S&amp;S Realty Limited et al. relating to the Cleveland Road Safety Improvement Project", and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chair. I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension as rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Crable, prior to acknowledging you, I need to offer, I need to ask for an amendment to this piece of legislation. The amount, $1,205,887.81, is incorrectly stated in the ordinance documents that are in our package that we're about to pass legislation on. So I would add, the amount is, just some arithmetic was off on it. I would ask that we pass, that we amend this legislation to accurately represent $1,205,887.81 to be paid to S&amp;S Realty. And I'm not using my math on this, I'm using our law.
So moved. Correct.
And it's not, it's correct in the whereas clause. It's not correct in Section 2 of the ordinance. This way, they'll get the right amount of money.
Right. Yeah, this was, this judgment was not final until last Wednesday at midnight. And to get it on the agenda, we had to... And to make sure the interest was as little as possible, we're going to pay it tomorrow if the commission passes this ordinance. So there'll be less than a week's of additional interest. The interest calculation, though, is something unique to appropriations law. The interest actually begins to accrue from the moment the case is filed, which was last May.
So there's no way to avoid that?
There's no way to avoid it because we didn't even know what the interest would be until the judgment becomes final. And it didn't become final until Wednesday at midnight.
Excellent explanation. Can I have a motion to amend that?
So moved.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Crable.
I was also going to suggest that there's, even once the court has made the award, or, you know, ordered it, there's a period of time for both parties to appeal, okay? Well, interest is accruing during that entire time, and there's nothing we can do about it. We, you know, whether we decide to appeal or not, the other side has a say in this. So, you know, as long as, basically, you have to run the entire time until the deadline of the appeal runs out. And we're paying interest the entire time, unfortunately.
Ms. Myers, we pull the commission on the motion to amend.
Mr. Coontz?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray? Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Abstain.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
That this piece of legislation is amended to correct the dollar figure. Now, we will return to discussion on the piece of legislation. Any additional comments or questions regarding the legislation? I have a couple of thank yous and maybe attaboys to offer. I had the privilege of sitting through that entire trial, and I want to commend both our Law Department, Mr. Hastings, and Ms. Murray, who sat through every minute of that trial also, as well as Stephen Funk, the outside attorney that represented us. I think they did a fabulous job of representing the city. And the purpose for my attending that was, in 76 years of being on this earth, I think I know a little bit about human nature. My concern was those jurors sitting there disliked two things in this environment today. They dislike government, and they dislike roundabouts. And I felt that with someone from the city sitting there, sitting through five days, 46 hours of that trial, at least we put a face on where government is. Maybe it wasn't a pretty face, but it was a face. And I want to commend the Law Department and our outside counsel for the judgment that we got, I think was the result of perhaps ODOT undervaluing the appraisal and the property owners overvaluing the appraisal. We counted on those jurors to rectify that, and I think they did that. We are, in essence, took a $4.6 million ask and turned it into $1,250,000. I think that that was a fair result for us, and I honestly think it's a fair result for the property owner also. Neither of us chose to appeal that. So, maybe we're both unhappy with it, or maybe we're both happy with it, but it's what we got. And I'm very proud of our Law Department for the role that they played in that day in and day out for those five days. It was truly a team effort on the part of our Law Department and on the part of our outside counsel, which was impressive.
Mr. Chair, would you share, while Mr. Lamarcas alluded to it, just to give a little bit of background about ODOT's role now in this final value that we need to pay here?
I'm glad you're asking that question because I forgot the second thank you that I was going to make, and that is to ODOT. The second thank you to ODOT is because our engineering department has the type of relationship with ODOT that has built up over more than a decade of Mr. Klein being here, that they can reach out and negotiate things with ODOT. That's exactly what Mr. Klein and Josh Snyder did. They reached out and negotiated more financial participation from ODOT, to the extent that they are covering almost every dollar of that award. And they have, not only are they covering that, but once that was negotiated, after the trial concluded, they deposited the money in our account. And, you know, I think that speaks well of our engineering department, it speaks well of ODOT, that those dollars are now being covered by ODOT. Obviously, we have attorney's fees, and obviously, we have our 5% to cover. But when you do all the calculations, I think what you're going to find is we're going to get a $7 million infrastructure improvement, not just a roundabout, but a corridor improvement from Sycamore Line to the city limits for less than $1 million. A $7 million opportunity for less than $1 million. I think that's a wonderful result of working with the state and a city and finding a path forward for our residents' benefit. Additional comments or questions? Mr. Myers, you pull the commission on that motion.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Abstain.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. As far as, we present item number five, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and approving a settlement between the City of Sandusky and Vitanium Incorporated to resolve action filed in the Erie County Common Police Court, case number 2024-CV-0173, captioned "City of Sandusky, Ohio versus Vitanium Incorporated, et al., relating to the Cleveland Road Safety Improvement Project, and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter."
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Coons.
Move for approval of this ordinance under item five in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion. Mr. Hastings, I wonder if you would provide us with some dialogue on how we arrived at this, how this negotiation fell together. Perhaps you can speak, I know this is, these are separate pieces of legislation, but they are truly intricately tied together.
Yeah, this was a very complex negotiation. Vitanium had another very large appraisal from the same accounting firm that was representing S&amp;S. We, but what they really wanted, there's a third party here, Yang, that had a piece of property located between the two parcels that Vitanium already owned, and Vitanium had been trying to buy that property for a very long time. So, we were able to resolve, it was like an interlocking puzzle. We're paying, Vitanium is going to pay Yang $150,000, we are going to pay Yang, I think, $195,000. That'll satisfy Yang, and Yang will then transfer the property to Vitanium. And Vitanium plans to put a much larger development there, a larger hotel, and they have big plans, so we're excited to see what they can do.
Big win for us. Additional comments or questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Crable. Yeah, I guess the way I look at it, we took a sow's ear and turned it into a silk purse in many regards. It was, as you said, it was very complex, it was very detailed and difficult, and the trial certainly wasn't the easiest thing that ever took place. But I think the net result for everyone is going to be extremely positive, so, very good.
Good job. As far as you pull the commission on that motion.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. As far as you present item number six, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and approving a settlement between the City of Sandusky and Yang Properties LLC to resolve action filed in the Erie County Common Police Court, case number 2024-CV-0171, captioned "City of Sandusky, Ohio versus Yang Properties LLC, et al., relating to the Cleveland Road Safety Improvement Project, and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter."
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Coons.
Move for approval of this ordinance under item six in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion. Mr. Myers, you pull the commission on that motion.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. As far as you present item number seven.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to expend funds for the lining of concrete channels between the tower buildings and the clarifiers at the Big Island Water Works Plant by Advanced Rehabilitation Technology LLC of Bryan, Ohio through the Purchasing Cooperative of America purchasing program, and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your opinion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Want.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion. Big savings, Mr. Klein, in lining instead of replacing new.
Oh, yeah, yes, these are concrete channels, they're not easy to get to, so it'll be a big savings to just replace the liner and do that due diligence now, just a routine maintenance-type item that, you know, when materials reach their useful life, you have to go in and do that. So, something that hopefully will improve the efficiency of our water plant.
Great, thank you, Mr. Klein. Additional comments or questions? As far as you pull the commission on that motion, please.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. As far as you present item number six, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to execute purchase contracts for the acquisition of two parcels located at 1134 Huntington Avenue and 516 East Adams Street from Welcome Home, Ohio, for use through the Welcome Home, Ohio program, and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Crable.
I move approval of this ordinance, ordinance number one, under full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion. Ms. Gilson, we're on our way.
We are well on our way.
Three tonight and more to go.
Absolutely.
More to come.
And foundations poured today on Pierce Street. It's awesome.
Great.
You spoke earlier about not knowing what to expect. We didn't expect two rainstorms in one week that collapsed walls and filled in holes that were dug, but we're well on our way.
Great, excellent job. Additional comments or questions?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Coons.
I wanted to take time out to personally commend Colleen and her staff, because when I'm in the community, there are people who are asking about programs and what they can do, and I basically just refer them to her. And I've had probably three or four different people since I've been on the City Commission who would always say that she was really professional and accommodating, so I appreciate you for that and the work that you've done to help those individuals who came forward. So, keep up the good work.
Additional comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, I would just agree with Mr. Coons. I think that housing is a tough, tough nut to crack, and I think Colleen and her staff's done a great job, and I'm impressed with what you've done in looking for these houses to be done, and I think there'll be a lot of happy people in the community.
We are quickly becoming the poster child of this program, I think, and that's a good thing, because I think we all are aware that we started out with a, I don't know, $2.5 million ask, and turned into a $3.5 million ask, and we got all of that, so there's more to come. And I think this commission unanimously is, are in favor of affordable housing, that's what this is delivering. As far as you pull the commission on the motion.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. As far as you present item number eight, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to execute purchase contracts for the acquisition of two parcels located at 1134 Huntington Avenue and 516 East Adams Street from Welcome Home, Ohio, for use through the Welcome Home, Ohio program, and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Crable.
I move approval of this ordinance, ordinance number one, under full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion. Ms. Gilson, we're on our way.
We are well on our way.
Three tonight and more to go.
Absolutely.
More to come.
And foundations poured today on Pierce Street. It's awesome. You spoke earlier about not knowing what to expect. We didn't expect two rainstorms in one week that collapsed walls and filled in holes that were dug, but we're well on our way.
Great, excellent job. Additional comments or questions?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Coons.
I wanted to take time out to personally commend Colleen and her staff, because when I'm in the community, there are people who are asking about programs and what they can do, and I basically just refer them to her. And I've had probably three or four different people since I've been on the City Commission who would always say that she was really professional and accommodating, so I appreciate you for that and the work that you've done to help those individuals who came forward. So, keep up the good work.
Additional comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, I would just agree with Mr. Coons. I think that housing is a tough, tough nut to crack, and I think Colleen and her staff's done a great job, and I'm impressed with what you've done in looking for these houses to be done, and I think there'll be a lot of happy people in the community.
We are quickly becoming the poster child of this program, I think, and that's a good thing, because I think we all are aware that we started out with a, I don't know, $2.5 million ask, and turned into a $3.5 million ask, and we got all of that, so there's more to come. And I think this commission unanimously is, are in favor of affordable housing, that's what this is delivering. As far as you pull the commission on the motion.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. As far as you present item number eight, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to execute purchase contracts for the acquisition of two parcels located at 1134 Huntington Avenue and 516 East Adams Street from Welcome Home, Ohio, for use through the Welcome Home, Ohio program, and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Crable.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion. Mr. Ozak, would you give us some insight as to what we're doing with this?
Yes, I would. So, we've had issues with some of our code enforcement properties that the property owners or tenants are not being compliant with our ordinance the way it is now. And what basically happens is if we get notified of a property that has garbage or trash or debris out on their property, we have to notify them by letter, we have to wait five days, we have to go out and re-inspect. If it hasn't been taken care of, we have to prepare a search warrant, get code compliance and the police together, and go execute the search warrant and have those items removed. There's a couple of properties that we've been having issues with, where we've been out to one property six times in the last year, and the whole process has to start over, and when you're a residential neighborhood in July and August and having to deal with people that are leaving their trash out unattended, and we have to go, you know, they have to, they report it, then we have to go through the well there, what is feasible from development costs and a market attraction standpoint. So I think we're really excited to see the ability to visualize some housing development on some city-owned sites, and then actually, this process will draft RFPs for, or RFQs for development for those sites, so we can launch right into looking for developers to come into town. And this is a lot of what a developer would do as their kind of initial due diligence. So it's really helping answer questions that they might have. It will make the process more predictable for development. They'll know if there's zoning barriers. They'll know if there's infrastructure needs, those sort of things. We also received a grant from the Department of Development, the Housing Technical Assistance Program, and that will specifically support any zoning barriers that we find throughout the process. If we have setback items or other requirements in our zoning code that are providing a barrier to development, they will actually draft amendments to our zoning code in order to bring those things forward. So we have some specific funding dedicated for that as well. And of course, we'll keep you apprised and excited to all of those conversations that are really interested to make this a collaborative project.
Ms. Blair, is there a time period? How long is this going to take?
Yes, we're going to, we'd like to get started right away and hopefully conduct the first round of community engagement this fall. You tend to skip the November, December, January months for community engagement. So we'd love to be able to get out and do that initial kind of sketch visualization at the beginning in the fall this year, and then have like a round two in the spring. So that's the goal, that then we would be able to identify those zoning recommendations and be bringing the amendments in the summer of 26. So it's about a ten-to-fourteen-month project, depending on how that scheduling works out with the community engagement.
Thank you. Questions or comments, Commissioners? Mr. Crable.
The city-owned properties, the larger properties that we control, could you specify those so that the public knows?
Yes, we definitely want to look at the G N C Foundry site. We want to look at the remaining land around the Cold Creek neighborhood that is not under, that's still owned by the city. And then there's a number of parcels around the Churchill Park area and the MacArthur Park neighborhood. So those are three definitely focus areas we want to look at. We do have them in contract with up to four, so it might be that we look at a couple other piecemeal, larger sites to have them sketch on. They're going to look at some different types of scenarios. So we also are going to get out of this a pattern book. What we want to do is show concepts for single-family homes, you know, like the Welcome Home Ohio is a good example of what kind of house can fit on a narrow infill city lot. And we'd like to also make it easier for a builder, a local builder, that wants to build a house that fits within our code, to be able to take one of these concepts and then draw up a set of architectural plans. So we'll also be looking at opportunities for infill development for private developers as well.
And that will, I'm sorry, that will be part of this study?
Yes, that is part of this.
Okay. Because I thought it was going to focus strictly on the three large sites.
We'll get visualization scenarios for the focus area sites, and then we'll get a pattern book for potential infill development, like, you know, a couple of single-family options, maybe a couple duplex options that folks could just use. It won't be full architectural plans, because you spend a lot of money on architects, but it will at least be site plan concepts and like a front facade visualization on scale and what would fit.
Be a great start.
Yeah.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I just want to say again, thank you, because while housing is an issue and we, I know that there is a sense of being reactive, but you guys are leaving no stone unturned trying to find ways to bring housing to our community in all different forms. And so you're extremely proactive to a situation that, of course, we're all suffering from. But I just, I applaud you guys, because both of you and your entire department, because it's been refreshing to watch you work and come up with ideas. So, thank you.
As far as you poll the commission on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Coombs?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington? Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Coombs?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington? Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
That ordinance has passed. As far as you present item number ten, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed amending Part Five, General Offenses Code, Chapter 531, nuisances generally, Section 531-06, inspection abatement of the codified ordinances of the city of Sandusky, and declaring this ordinance shall take effect under suspension of rules as contained in and in accordance with section thirteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your play?
Mr. Chairman, I move for adoption of this ordinance under suspension of rules in full accordance with section thirteen of the city charter.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion. Mr. Orzak, would you give us some insight as to what we're doing with this?
Yes, I would. So we've had issues with some of our code enforcement properties that the property owners or tenants are not being compliant with our ordinance the way it is now. And what basically happens is if we get notified of a property that has garbage or trash or debris out on their property, we have to notify them by letter. We have to wait five days. We have to go out and re-inspect. If it hasn't been taken care of, we have to prepare a search warrant, get code compliance and the police together, and go execute the search warrant and have those items removed. There's a couple of properties that we've been having issues with, where we've been out to one property six times in the last year, and the whole process has to start over. And when you're a residential neighborhood in July and August and having to deal with people that are leaving their trash out unattended, and we have to go, you know, they have to, they report it, then we have to go through the process, it could be, you know, up to two weeks. So we just had a recent one, and the property, two weeks ago, and the property's already in violation again. So what we're trying to do is, once we do that process the first time, if we go back out over, in a year period, we just have to notify them 24 hours and then abate the situation. So it speeds up the process and hopefully gets their attention. We do have opportunity, if it's a nuisance continuing problem, to charge them criminally, excuse me, which we have done in one particular case. But this is a reaction, and a necessary one, for the neighborhoods and folks that are dealing with people that aren't nice neighbors, so.
Put some teeth in an ordinance, in other words.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Waddington.
Will that include, like my problem down in the corner of my street on Cleveland Road and McKinley, when you hit all the guys out there a few weeks back? I got cars and boats, the boats haven't been seaworthy in probably 50 years.
Yeah.
No, I'm serious. It's unbelievable. And then the cars are sitting there, one sawed in half the van, and I got to look at, and then Mr. Bajali's had one on Campbell Street, correct? We got a truck sitting there, no wheels on it. How is this possible?
Yeah, that one's being addressed. So there's all that process that we have to go through. So the one on Campbell Street is, you have to notify them. They have so much time to get the property up or start making progress towards it. If they're making progress towards it, I showed Mr. Bajali and Mr. Waddington the pictures. It was a lot worse than a truck in the front of the yard, so.
Right.
You know, like I said, a lot of this, that is processed, but the goal is to start taking care of the folks that are not being responsive to that. And they also will get billed for that situation, and if they don't pay it, it'll go on their taxes.
Thank you, Mr. Orzak. Comments or questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman. The 24-hour notice, does that include, can you just post it on the property?
Yeah, we're going to post it on their door.
Yeah, that's pretty effective. I think anytime you can speed up the whole nuisance process, it's good. And then, of course, you have to have follow-up with boots on the ground, but I think this is a good move.
As far as you poll the commission on that motion, please.
Mr. Coombs?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington? Mr. Brady? Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Coombs?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington? Mr. Brady? Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
That ordinance has passed. As far as you present our last item, item number one, item number eleven, number one of item number nine.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to expend funds for the purchase and installation of an apide canopy body for the water distribution division and a gallon dump truck, galleon dump body for the city maintenance division from Colita Truck Equipment Incorporated of Wallbridge, Ohio, and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman. I plead after this ordinance pursuant to section fourteen of the city's charter.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I've said it before, but I'll say it again. We really need to provide the men and women who work for the city of Sandusky with the proper tools to do their work. We've been doing that for the last 10 years, and we've seen the number of complaints regarding everything from potholes to ice on the streets, to picking up leaves, and everything in between significantly reduced during that period of time. So, and we've also seen morale increase, from what I've been told. And so I think we really win by making these investments, because we get better services and we get it done more efficiently. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions? As far as you poll the commission on that motion.
Mr. Coombs?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington? Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Coombs?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington? Mr. Brady? Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
That ordinance has passed. As far as you present item eleven, number two.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to purchase two 2026 Ford F-550 chassis trucks from Valley Truck Centers of Cleveland, Ohio, for the divisions of water distribution and sewer maintenance, and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Coombs.
Move for approval of ordinance number two under item eleven in full accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bajali.
These prices are set in stone. We can't, they're not going to come back with tariff, tariff cost, or anything like that.
You making a guarantee, Mr. Klein?
I will say that we did not have any language according to tariffs in our RFP. So I, but I'm guessing that they're not coming back. They should be pretty set in stone.
Delivery times, Mr. Klein, out there?
I do not have the exact delivery timeline. I did ask for that a couple of weeks ago, and I did get it, but I don't remember what it was. I'll email that out to you.
Are you guessing this calendar year, though?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll email that out to you once I get it.
Great. Additional comments or questions? As far as you poll the commission on that motion, please.
Mr. Coombs?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington? Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Coombs?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington? Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
That ordinance has passed. I conclude the review agenda. We'll turn to our city manager, please.
Thank you, Commissioners, audience, and staff. I did want to note and thank Mr. Bajali on his involvement in the ODOT conversation. He was very integral in his relationship with ODOT and working with Mr. Klein and Josh Snyder, so thank you for helping us along that process.
Thank you, Mr. Orzak.
I would like to request a motion to affirm Mindy Bonson to the Housing Appeals Board. Ms. Bonson's term will go through December 31st, 2027. Ms. Bonson's will be filling the remaining board position. There is one remaining alternate board position open. We get a motion to accept her.
So moved. Second.
A motion and a second discussion. There are no objections. That motion should be approved. No objection to that motion.
Staff are finalizing the RFQ for the rec center, which will be released within the next couple of weeks. A design build timeline for contractor selection is being finalized. The underground work on East Perkins Ave is complete. Installation of the sidewalks will occur at the end of August, paving to follow. The temporary material used for subsurface settlement to accommodate the Sandusky Bay Pathway Bridge has been removed from both sides for Pipe Creek. Settlement has reached an acceptable tolerance, so the contractor will begin installation of cofferdams, foundations, and pads. Additionally, installation of curb along Cleveland Road will begin this week, as the pathway will start taking shape. The project is still scheduled for December completion. The tennis court project is complete. The first match is being played currently, or close to being over, I guess, this afternoon between Sandusky High School and Sandusky Central Catholic Girls Teams. Moser Construction plans to begin installation of piers for the boardwalks across Heminger Ditch shortly after Labor Day. They will move from the western project limits to the northeast to minimize impacts to the adjacent facilities. And the contractor for Churchill Park plans to energize the lighting system at Churchill Park this week. Only punch list items remain. That concludes my report. I'll take any questions you have.
Commissioners, have any questions or comments for our city manager? Items of old business, any items of old business?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Parker.
I probably should have said it in the last section with John, but I think we need to really say thank you to you and the entire staff, Jason Whirling specifically, everyone who was involved in the vision of Tommy, Tommy Boy Fest this weekend. Our city shined again. There were thousands of people here from all over, everywhere, and we put on, his whole team, everyone that was involved, and G S P helped, everyone, I don't even know who all was involved, but a lot of sponsors from everywhere, and it was incredible. I met the guys who owned the brake pad business that, in Chicago, who bought the Callahan. You know, they have the name now for being able to sell the merchandise. They were just so neat, and everyone just seemed to just love being here. And so what a festival that you guys put on, our part in it at least, and I look forward to seeing what's next. So it was great, really great.
For sure. Additional items of old business? It's not that old, it's a day old.
Yeah.
I would say old business is the tennis court, another W, I think, in this commission, in this city's win column, with the tennis courts. What a terrific bit of collaboration it took to bring that together between a couple of school systems and a lot of very, very generous donors. The foundation certainly, as they always are, stood by our side. Alumni from both the Sandusky School System and the private school system came to the plate. Wrong analogy, I guess. Came to the court with their checklists. And that is a facility that obviously will be enjoyed by the high schools, but it is a terrific facility for any resident in this city that chooses to play tennis. Items of new business, any items of new business, Commissioners? I have one housekeeping item here that I would ask for a motion to set a public hearing for September 8th for the program year 2024.
Yes.
Paper report for C D B G.
So moved.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. As far as you poll the commission on that motion.
Mr. Coombs?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
That public hearing is set. Additional items of new business, Commissioners?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Coombs.
I have a few items to address, but any of the other Commissioners have something else to say, I would just give one comment, and others can chime in. First thing by priority is, there is a community safety forum planned for August 21st, Thursday, at Father's Heart Ministry to address the increasing gun violence in our community over the past probably four, five months, maybe more. And I just wanted to make sure that we are all aware of that. I know that Chief Oliver has been engaged in conversations about the format, and I didn't know if he wanted to provide any details about that and the format. I know that I've been asked to participate in a panel discussion about that, so just anything that you'd like to add would be.
You pretty much hit the topic. It's going to be from 4:30 to 6:00. There'll be a panel discussion. Jarvis Cole will be the moderator, and there'll be some question and answer from community members when you arrive, too. Schools are going to take part as well.
What time is that going to be?
4:30 to 6:00, if I'm not mistaken, right?
Correct.
Where?
In this.
At Father's Heart Ministry.
And this is on the 24th?
21st.
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 Thursday.
Got it.
Next week.
Okay.
Additional items of new business?
Mr. Chair. All right. So nobody had any comments, so I have a few things on my list. Couple of things, one of the things that I did about three weeks ago is I met with individuals responsible for AMVETS. One was a Mr. Taylor, and about four other coaches. And so I was curious, because I know that we actually spent some money out at Sprout Park, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I think it was approved before I actually took my seat on the commission, and it was $217,000 that was spent on a playground area out at Sprout. It's beautiful, I mean, and it's needed, but at the same time, I'm wondering why, if they made a request to have a batting cage, a practice pitcher's mound, netting, and also to seal beneath the fence, because balls actually go under that fence. And the very most important thing to me is, they are operating with porta-potties out there. I know that it can probably get to be a little expensive for restrooms out there, but that's a difficult proposition to have families out there, and they can't use the restroom. They use a porta potty. And so I'm just wondering, and I did talk to the city manager about this, and he was candid about ARPA funds. And so I don't know what the process is in terms of how much money is available in ARPA funds, because I did ask, would ARPA funds be able to be used for that, because it was used for the children's playground area? And I'm thinking that ARPA funds could be, but you are all the experienced Commissioners here, so I just wanted some feedback, because when I have constituents that ask me questions, and I actually take the time to look around that park, it's atrocious. And so any feedback that you all can give me, how you feel about it, if you've dealt with the issue in the past, I would like to know what your thoughts are about AMVETS. Yeah, and I know that there are some other issues, you know, people have perceptions about who's coaching, how they coach, but you know, the majority of the folks that I've seen out there giving their time, right, they're not paid anything, and they're giving their time to give back to those kids that are out there. And a lot of those kids and their families, they can't afford to go to Cedar Point Sports Complex. They look forward to that time, to be able to coach, to be able to be mentored. And so, you know, when I get that kind of information and I get a chance to see it for myself, it just disappoints me. So I'm just curious about that, and how you all feel. Have you dealt with that issue before? What decisions were made, and what was decided?
Mr. Chairman, as ARPA funds are gone, that's all done. It's way up there, that had to have some miles. That money's all going to count for.
Yeah, I understand that, but I'm talking about in the future. I'm talking about before, next summer, what can be done? What are we prepared to do? Because I think we really have to be conscious of this fact, that perception is almost everything, depending on who you talk to. next summer, what can be done? What are we prepared to do? Because I think we really have to be conscious of this fact, that perception is almost everything, depending on who you talk to. And for the individuals who send their children there, they see that and they say, what? We got to use porta-potties out here? We don't have a place for these kids to practice batting? They certainly won't be able to see the point Sports Center. We can't have a practice mound? Now, the last time I checked, and I did just a quick check as it relates to like a batting cage, you know, the batting cage can go anywhere from the cheapest, like $400, $500, all the way up to $10,000, right? The pitching mound can go anywhere from $1,000 to $2,000. Netting, I don't think that would cost too much. And sealing the bottom of the fence out there, I don't think that that would be exorbitant. Now, what might be exorbitant is the cost for restrooms, right? Maybe, but maybe we need to look at how we can make that happen. So that's pretty much what I have as it relates to that part. Now, I'll have to admit, I did have somebody come to me about Farwell. And I'll say this about Farwell, I've never seen Farwell look more beautiful, right? I played basketball on that court years ago, years ago, Dick. But I've never seen it look that good, with one exception. Now, I have to admit, I didn't look all around, but somebody told me they don't have a porta-potty out there. And maybe somebody can tell me whether that's true or not, but don't most of our parks have at least one or two porta-potties? I know they have them at JC, in that area where the picnic area is. And I think they have a, they have the restroom that I'm talking about, this is kind of changing the subject a little bit, out at Lyons Park, right? We got a restroom that can serve people out there. So you know, when we're making decisions about where we put restrooms, why we put restrooms in certain parks, but not put restrooms in other parks, there's a perception that goes along with that.
May I ask a question? Mr. Klein, you might know the answer to this. Putting in a restroom, first and foremost, probably has to do, or the ease of doing it, the cost of doing it, has to do with the adjacency of public services, sewer, water. Is there sewer and water, are there sewer and water services adjacent to AMVETS?
Yes, there are, depending on where you want to put it. I mean, if you want to put it out in the middle field, you'd have to run it a lot farther. But if you wanted to put it near one of the roadways, then yes, there would be sewer and water near, you know, adjacent to that roadway.
Thank you. I wanted to ask a couple of questions about this. As most of you know, of course, all of you know that I serve on the recreation board as the liaison. Now, at our last city commission meeting, and I already told you this, Mr. Chair, I kind of took for granted, I expected the process to move along, because I couldn't make the last rec board meeting, because there was a death in my family, my mother-in-law passed tragically. So I couldn't be there. So I assumed, wrongfully, I don't generally assume, but I assumed that those individuals had an opportunity to talk about anybody who had applied to fill the rec board seat. But what I found out later is that the recommendation came forward without them talking about who was going to be appointed. Now, I don't know how things are traditionally done, but I would think that probably one of the best things to do, from my perspective, is to ask those individuals who serve on any board or committee, first, to look at those applications, those people who are interested, and try to determine, what is the need for the board or the commission? I think that's the first thing they should do. I think another thing that should be done is, and it's ironic, actually, that we had a conversation about what shouldn't go on the ballot, and we talked about priority being given to Sandusky residents, and then, right, we talked about that initially, and we chose not to put it on the ballot, because we absolutely agreed that Sandusky residents should be given priority. And then we come right back around, and then we appoint somebody to the rec board who is not a Sandusky resident. And only one staff member made that recommendation. Now, I'm just saying, from my perspective, I think the individuals that we have chosen or have been chosen and submitted applications who are on those committees and boards, right, they should be able to at least chime in before those recommendations come before us. I'm interested in your thoughts on that as a body, as fellow commissioners. That's another one. Let me address, so we talked about AMVETS, we talked about rec. Last two. And this is something I'll probably have to get with our city manager about and ask questions about. But I'm really interested in about, I'm really interested about evaluations, because I heard somebody say, you know, our staff, they do an excellent job, and they have to do the job with what they have. I'm really interested in, you know, is there like a step process for their evaluations? How do we work in salary increases for individuals, time served? That's just something maybe I can get with you later on, John. And the last is, I know that when we, if somebody leaves a position, right, do we typically fill the position, depending on our budget? And I have one specific position in mind. I know that Marcus Harris took another job in Cleveland. And so did we eliminate that position? Will we rehire for that position? If I miss something, I apologize, but please explain whether or not that's something that we plan to do. And that covers all of the items that I have on my list.
Mr. Rosak, do you meet with Commissioner Coons on a regular basis?
Yeah.
Okay. It just occurs to me that everything you're talking about, you know, you can get input from our city manager, who is the only person that is responsible to us.
Okay.
That would be my suggestion.
I figured I'd have to talk to him, but all of these things on this list, they just happened within the last, you know, actually between the time we met, and at least four of these items.
Ms. Vargo.
But Commissioner Coons did ask for some feedback from us as a body, too, on a couple of his topics. And the one thing that just strikes me are parks, no matter what kind of park it is, whether it's for athletic usage parks, whether it's a park that I walk through and look at the beautiful flowers and all the great things that our greenhouse department has done, doesn't matter. Overall, we've done a very good job, but I don't like to hear, AMVETS is just something near and dear to all of our hearts as we were kids. We all ran around down there. And if we're going to continue to have it and continue our programming there, it should be just as well maintained as every other park we have. So I would ask that we would support at least looking at it, seeing what we have for the future, plan for that. Is it up to snuff? Is it where it should be? And I truly believe our parks are something, are really special to our community, no matter if you're out on the west side at Lyons Park, or you're over, you know, at JC Park, or you're at Farwell Park, or Central Park, whatever park we're at, we have a lot of parks. And for the most part, they're really well maintained. And so it saddens me when I think of all the little kids that look forward to that opportunity, if it's not that way. But I would like to, I'd like to get some, I'd like to have it looked at, so we could understand what's going on down there, because I do agree with you about that, so.
Mr. Chairman, go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Rosak.
I would just add that AMVETS Park is no different than Sandusky City Schools using our, having priority use of our facilities, or Sandusky Central Catholic having priority use of our facilities. AMVETS Park has priority use, and is supposed to be maintaining the park as part of their priority use agreement. And so there's a opportunity for folks that are in positions to take care of a park, it shouldn't be the city staff doing it when it's their job, and they're signing an agreement when they're, and it's been in place for a significant number of years. The other stuff I'd be happy to look at. But, you know, AMVETS Park folks that are taking on those responsibilities need to maintain the park as part of their agreement, just like all the other parks that we have that have priority use.
Thank you.
Mr. Jim.
Mr. White.
I want to turn the page a little bit. Does anybody know, is there ever going to be a schedule for the Sandusky Pool? I heard they can't find lifeguards. It's, you know, here we are, it's all, you know, school starts in a few weeks, and does anybody have a clue for that?
I would say, we, I have a friend who, an adult friend, I have an adult friend who just became a lifeguard, and she's going to be, she's going to be lifeguarding. But I also know some other friends, they've been going to aerobics classes there, I have friends that are swimming there, so they must be figuring out when they're supposed to go. But they have a, they have a Facebook page, don't they, that posts?
It's on the city school website, and it's on our website, and it's on the health department website.
There is a schedule posted for that?
Correct.
So that's done?
It's not done, because they got closed down the door when you go out there at 6 o'clock at night.
I think.
Mr. Coons, yeah, you work out there, right? What do they do? They close it, right?
I mean, I can only, I can only speak about the schedule that I saw, and I saw literally maybe two hours for community use. And I didn't really, I didn't really see any time for children to swim, I think it was community use, but I know that they talked about teaching children to swim. So I think they're just having problems trying to make sure that they have the lifeguards. But one of the issues that I thought about was, you know, when they decided to partner with Erie County Mental Health, or the Erie County Health Department, I'm sorry, I can see the benefit of that, but at the same time, I wondered what the dialogue looked like, or if it was even attempted for our rec staff to somehow be involved in this process of, hey, you know, we're working with kids, with our rec department, and then there's a combination of us working with the schools to determine what would be a good time for us to get into the pool, into the aquatic center. I don't know what that was, but I think that, you know, two hours won't get it.
Mr. Rosak, we could reach out to the health department and ask them for some clarification as to, thanks for the schedule, but when are you going to adhere to it?
Correct, yep.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Richell.
I would just like to ask Ms. Gilson, I wonder if the equipment that Mr. Coons had mentioned for AMVETS, some of those items would fall under Ms. Growey's program, those HUD dollars and the caper and all that?
I will look into it for sure, to see if it's an eligible area, and to see how our dollars are programmed for next year.
Okay. And then, Mr. Chairman, my other question is, to Mr. Klein, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I would think to put a restroom in a park like that, with plumbing and running water and everything, you're probably looking at 100, 100 plus, maybe, right? $100,000, because it's government work, and I've seen, you know, a few years back, where they would come in and it would cost $100,000 to do a bare bones restroom.
To that question, a couple of years ago, we bid out a project of a pre-cast restroom with underground utilities going to and from it, out at JC on the north part there. And it was over $200,000. So we started looking at other options of maybe CMU block restrooms built in place and those types of things. And they're still over $100,000.
Thank you.
Additional items of new business? Any residents with comments regarding city business?
Yep.
This is your opportunity.
Good afternoon. My name is Darwick Garrett, 315 Decatur Streets in Sandusky, Ohio. I have two concerns. And one of the first, one of the concerns, and I need the priority, both of them are priority, is interesting, Dr. Coons, and I think one of you, one of you two guys, either Mr. Bajali or Mr. Wantington, mentioned about the restrooms. On June, July 26th, we had a family gathering out there, and that included children, adults, everybody. There's no restroom out there. Now, when my niece booked the park, I think she should have been told there's no restroom. Neither is there electrical drop, but she was charged the same amount. First concern is, yeah, it's a nice park, and it's ironic that you have the basketball courts out there, and usually, Farwell Park, I'm sorry, Farwell Park. You have the basketball courts out there, and usually when you play basketball, you drink water, you sweat, you use the bathroom. It just so happened that my sister didn't live too far away on Cleveland Road, so we had to get in the car, drive to my sister's house, use the bathroom, and then come back. Take the fun out of having any type of barbecue. My second concern is that in front of Second Baptist Church, maybe about two or three weeks ago, I saw the water department putting stakes in the ground. I said, okay, it's just a city formality, they have to do something. So I didn't think nothing of it. And then about a week ago, we come to church, there's a podium in front of the church. So before I jump to any conclusions, I asked everybody in the church, what is it? What is it? No one seems to know. And I, we understand that it's on the city portion, but we still have to take care of it, cutting the grass and all that good stuff. Someone should have been given the courtesy of saying, we're going to put a podium up here for ABC reasons. Someone could have given a call. We have a competent trustee member who checks the telephone every day. No one came, no one called, no one knocked on the door and said, we're putting this here for what reason? I don't know who put it there. We don't know who put it there. Not one church member. All we know is there, and I just saw the water department putting the podium. That's why I'm starting with you all, because I saw the water department. Those are my two concerns. I wish you guys would address it as soon as possible, especially the one about the restroom. Yeah, Farwell's a nice park, it's a beautiful park. From where it used to be, you still didn't even have a park out there, if you want to go back in time. So I can't take that away, but it should be some type of potty-potty restroom, something. You know, what you want, there's some woods back there, you can, that wouldn't be so nice. But really, it should be some type of restroom. And then, if you're, if you're even told that the electric, there's no electrical drop, then maybe a resident can go somewhere else and get a park, if they want to play music, so they can have electrical drop. Thank you.
Mr. Rosak, I might correct you. Farwell Park is kind of a unique park in our, for our city situation, that we do not own that park.
Yeah, we lease the park from Cedar Point.
We lease the park from Cedar Point. And probably that has something to do with the lack of amenities.
We'll look at the restroom.
Well, look at that situation. And perhaps you can cycle through the water department and find out the podium issue.
Yeah. I'm not quite sure.
Was there an event held there, Mr. Garrett? Were you aware of an event that was?
We had an event, my family had a personally.
No, I'm talking about the podium, the podium.
Oh, I don't know, there's no, it's actually a podium that's connected to the ground. You can't pull it out. I'm calling a podium, it might be.
It's not still there now, is it?
It's still there.
Still there now?
It's still there, yeah.
That's where I'm going, before I go home tonight.
It's, it's black, it's not a fiber box.
Is there a microphone?
It's like a fire stand. You put your little music there and direct fire, but it's actually, you can ride by there now.
I will, I'll ride by.
It's right in front of the church. And no one knows, you can't move it.
We'll check it out.
So whoever put it there, put it there, but not to be moved. And then with the park situation, I already asked the city manager, is Farwell Park leased from Cedar Point, or how does that work?
That's correct. It's leased from Cedar Point, not on a multi-year basis, I believe.
Mr. Chairman, could this podium have something to do with the grant funds that we are using for the Underground Railroad?
I don't know.
Because Second Baptist played a role.
It's part of the Underground Railroad. But my first question to that is, why wasn't we given the respect and told that it's going to be put there? I'm quite sure we would have said, no problem with it there.
Yeah.
But we weren't. And that's my concern, too.
Okay.
If somebody come by and put something in your house in front of your apartment, none of you all would have.
They'll check, they'll check in.
Give us the same respect.
No, 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 that's.
We'll check in, too.
Thank you.
We did that, we apologize, but we'll get to the bottom.
Okay, thank you.
Additional public comment on any item regarding city?
Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way. I have four or five items concerning recreation. The first is actually a statement, you know, as we add more parks, which is a great thing, we're going to have the Landing Park, we've got beautiful flowers here on Columbus Avenue, Shoreline Drive, Jackson Street Pier. Are we not maybe stretching our people that have boots on the ground too thin? I did notice that there, on the city's website, there is some job opportunities for seasonal help. It's almost mid-August, and I'm just curious why we're hiring seasonal help this late in the season. Probably should have been made sooner on the year to take care of some of these situations that we're talking about, like Sprawl Park. Did receive a message that Churchill Park, two days after it was opened, it was trashed, completely trashed. So I don't know if we have crews that go around still to every park in the morning that try to make sure that the parks are clean. On the schedule for swimming at the Sandusky High School, it would be nice, once we get a concrete schedule for public use, open public use, that the city of Sandusky, since we are partners, find a way to get it on the city's recreation Facebook page, and also the Sandusky's regular Facebook page. You've heard me say before that people pay more attention to social media than what they do websites. So it would be a good idea to get that out into the public. On the recreation board appointment, I know Mr. Coons and I talked about maybe recommending that since the appointee actually works for Erie County Metro Parks, that we actually make a spot on the rec board for a Erie County Metro Parks person, staff person, and then appoint that person that was appointed as the representative for Erie Metro Parks, and then just get another regular citizen that is in line. And I know there's applications out there that have been filed for the rec board, because I'm one of them, okay? I know a couple other people that have had applications for several months, maybe a couple of years. So that's a suggestion that you guys can all talk about. Just want to remind, if the city manager could remind the Marousse Brothers, or Vantage, or wherever they're calling themselves, at Battery Park, that they are still responsible for vegetation overgrowth on the break walls and piers that they take care of. I know that's getting kind of bad again. And also, until they start their condominium, hotel, commercial, retail project, that they are responsible also for the tennis courts at that location. I noticed a lot of the, like, there's like three or four nets that are actually like torn up. And I know that we're not having high school games there anymore, but there are some people that like to use that area for recreational tennis. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Schwager. Additional comments from the public?